Good evening. We're going to go ahead and call to order the April 17th meeting of the Planning Commission. If everyone will please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see all my fellow commissioners. I'm trying to recall the last time we've all actually been seated here together. It's been awhile. I think so. I think there still was typewriters.
Well, the five of us have never been here before.
That is true. And that is, the first item I'd like to say is a very hearty welcome to our newest member. I know you've had to wait a couple of months, I think now, to actually take your first meeting here, but welcome. We welcome you here to the commission. It's important for the city to have a full complement when some of these items come before us, so we welcome here. And if you have any, anything you wish to say to the rest, or any of my other commissioners, I mean, they'd like to say?
I'd just like to say thank you, and I'm looking forward to working together with everybody.
You say that now. And so, let's go ahead and do roll call.
Member Keeney.
Here.
Vice Chair List.
Here.
Chair Saragosa.
Here.
Member Jubah.
Here.
Member Friend.
Yes.
Okay, quorum is established. Let's go ahead and move on to the consent calendar, adoption of today's agenda.
Who to adopt?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item is approved. Okay, so, let's go ahead and move on to item three, any items of interest to the public. So these would be items that are not currently on today's agenda. See, no takers. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of today's meeting. So the first item is item 5.1. These would be the minutes from the February 6 meeting. If everyone had a chance to review those.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, did we dispense with public hearing? I know the item was withdrawn, but did you mention that? Or did I just miss it?
No, I did not.
I think we need to at least announce.
Now that is, yeah, that's true.
That it was withdrawn, so the minutes reflect.
Good point. Thank you, Commissioner Friend. So item four, so before we move on to item five, new business, item four, which was 1270 Broadway, was a temporary use permit 18-01. That item has been withdrawn by the applicant. I don't know if staff has any comment on that.
No, the, well, other than the staff did prepare a public notice, which we published in the Mountain Democrat, but subsequent to that, the applicant has withdrawn his application. He is seeking an alternative location, so this item will likely come back to you. It'll be under a different number because of a physical, a different physical address. So it's a temporary office would be, what this would be for, 12-month period.
Got you. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Commissioner Friend. Any other comments on that? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on then to item five, new business, item 5.1, which was minutes from our February 6 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, this item was put as a separate item and not part of the consent calendar because we do have a member who wasn't present at that meeting.
Correct.
And this would allow him a chance to recuse himself should he wish to, or abstain from voting.
Does he have a choice?
Only he can make that determination.
All right. Well, I'm just curious how he would be able to take a position on the minutes for a meeting that he wasn't there. No disrespect intended, but I'm just curious, I'm curious as to how that's, how it's offered.
Sometime in the heat of the moment, I've seen commissioners who I know have been absent, and they, they're on the record as voting that they've adopted the minutes.
All right. We'll open an end of that right now.
Yes. Yeah, I think just in, for, we generally will just acknowledge that we weren't here and.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Member Keeney.
Aye.
Vice Chair List.
Aye.
Member Saragosa.
Aye.
Member Zubah.
Abstain.
And Member Friend.
Aye.
All right. That passes 4-0. That makes it nice and tidy. So let's go ahead and move on to item 5.2. And that's the election of officers for a planning commission, both the chair and the vice chair. And so I will go ahead and open this up for discussion now. Member List.
Chairman, I would like to nominate Member Friend as chair for the coming year.
I will second that nomination.
All right, we have a nomination and a second discussion.
It only seems fair to move this responsibility around. Does it seem like it's too onerous? But I want to thank you, Mr. Saragosa, for your service. And you can take a step down. Let somebody else do it. Pull the.
Nobody's voted yes yet.
Well, that's what, by the way, explaining why I didn't nominate you to continue as our chair.
Okay, well, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote on the nomination of Member Friend as chair.
Would you like a roll call?
Yes.
Member Keeney.
Aye.
Vice Chair List.
Aye.
Chair Saragosa.
Aye.
Member Jubah.
Aye.
Member Friend.
If it's not self-grandiosing, aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would move Commissioner Keen for vice, for vice chair.
I second that motion.
Discussion.
Move the nominations be closed?
All those in favor?
Aye, unless you are.
Aye. Oppose? All right. We have a new chair and vice chair. Congratulations, members.
Thank you very much.
For the record, those, those officers take their chair, so to speak, at the following meeting. Yeah, unlike at council where the mayor, that stepped, the current mayor steps down and the new, newly-elected mayor steps forward. And under your bylaws, the officers take their places at the following meeting.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. So we're going to go ahead and move on to item 5.3, which is the commission bylaw review and amendment. And so, Andrew or Pierre, if, I remember, we put this on last year, I believe.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to remember the nexus for, if it was just a periodic review of the rules and regulations for a planning commission, or if we had a specific request that had been put forward by a member of the body on this, so.
I don't recall the specificity of why, but I, but I do know historically, and Member Friend can probably attest to this, that usually annually, or almost every couple years, these come forward for, for discussion. And I think for the, for the better part, for the new members who, who might come from a slightly different perspective and may have some interest in, in changing these or amending these in some fashion. I will, will say that our staff, Lynn in our office, found, found a rather dusty document, which we made copies of from 1962. It appears to be the version of the bylaws that were drafted the year after the city code established the mechanism of creating a planning commission. So what you see appears to be somebody's editorial aspects to this, to this draft document, or, or maybe this actually became, you know, the bylaws. I'm not sure. We have no record of this in our files, other than what you've seen. But you will, if you read it over, a lot of the verbiage carries over to today. There's, there's some whole sections that are, that are currently in your bylaws as drafted and, and approved by, by you and the body over, over the years. We'll add a couple of other things that, I noticed a typo, not in the 1962 document. The government code reference in the first paragraph is correct, and I've noticed that we've carried over a typo for probably 15 years. It should be government code section 65102, not 802. So we will certainly make those changes to page one, under article one of your bylaws. And also, staff has another suggested amendment for you to consider tonight. This would be on page three, under article seven, subsection H, where it talks about newly-appointed members may vote on items immediately after appointment, provided that they have reviewed their record, including tapes, minutes, reports, and files. I think we could include video perhaps to, to that list of, of things. And that's, that's all staff has for, for you to consider tonight.
I noticed in the older bylaws that the chair was, had the ability to process claims of expenses for the commission, so I guess we had money back then. Don't seem to have that now.
Yeah, also, the, the chair and the election were by secret ballot, so they must have been more intrigued as well.
That's a big, big no-no.
I did have just one question for staff, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In article seven procedures, under D, and my Roberts Rules is a little bit rusty, and this deals with a quorum, and so the bylaws state that someone abstains from voting, that doesn't break the quorum. Isn't there also a scenario, and I believe we've had this scenario, where we started out with a quorum, and then we lost a member at some, I hate to say lost a member, but they, they become subsequently absent for the vote, but the quorum is still established? Is that right? So do we, should we have language that would say that the abstention of any, of voting by any member, or the subsequent absence of a member post-establishment of the quorum does, shall not break the quorum? Would that be technically correct?
An abstention is treated differently than a recusal, just to let, just to perhaps confuse this discussion more. A, we haven't talked about recusal, but for those members who do need to recuse themselves because of a conflict of interest, you actually leave the room, you were not a voting member at that particular time, you're not counted as a vote cast, or a vote for or against the item. So that could affect the quorum. For instance, if we had five members, each of you had a conflict of interest, then we couldn't hear that item. And the bylaws do discuss, if that outcome were to occur, then the item before you would automatically go up to council for consideration. But to address your question, I think, I think you're technically correct.
Thank you. I'll leave it at the pleasure of the chair, if you're interested in any kind of a change along those lines.
Commissioner Friend, can you just repeat the language again that you had suggested?
So on item D, the last second sentence would read, "The abstention of voting by any member, or the subsequent absence of the member after the establishment of the quorum, shall not break the quorum."
Just my thoughts is, I, I don't have a problem tightening that language a little bit more. I, I could see where that could potentially happen, where someone just leaves and we have three members on the dais.
It happened. I remember it happened at least once, and, and we only had three members, or, or four members here, I can't remember what it was, but it did occur.
Now, you're, you're talking about just getting up and leaving in the middle of a.
For some reason, they, they had, they had to leave for some reason, so we started the meeting with them, and then for whatever reason, by the time we got to this item, they weren't. It may have been.
And so then we, we had four, and we had three.
Yeah, it may have been.
We still had a quorum, we had three members.
Yeah. There's, there was a time when I think we actually were down to two, and because we started with three.
We started with.
We started with three, and so the quorum was still there, and we had two. So two out of the three is, in the affirmative, or the negative, either one, but two out of the three is, is still the quorum. The quorum was, wasn't broken. I recall that. I don't remember what the item was, it's a long time ago.
Right. So in this case, the instance would be just in the, in the odd occurrence where we have three members and one steps away, for whatever reason, in the middle of the.
Right.
Of said meeting. So we'd be down to two.
And if it hadn't happened, they would never have brought it up, but it did happen.
Member List.
I, I just remember a couple of years ago, Member Wolf had to leave in the middle of a meeting, and that may be the one that you were talking about.
That may, that may have been it.
And I think there was, I think there were four of us, and it dropped down to three, which would still give you a quorum.
Right.
Were there any other items on the rules and procedures? Members had any thoughts, ideas, hatred?
The previous, the previous item, if there are five members present, and in the middle of the meeting, four get up to leave, does that still mean that there's a quorum? If we pass this amendment to the bylaws?
No, I wouldn't think we'd have a quorum. Because you have to have three members for a quorum.
No, it's a, well, it's a good question.
You have to set, you establish the quorum when you open the meeting. That establishes the quorum. But you can have the loss of some members during the course of the meeting, but the quorum was established. The question is, do you need, do you need at least two people, or do you need one? I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, the US legislature, if you ever watched C-SPAN, where a member may get up to the podium and declare that he, he or she notices an absence of a quorum, meaning there isn't enough people on the floor, so what is that, what does the House, for instance, do? They, they start roll call. So I, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I, but I, but I think, yeah, if four people were to leave, I'm not sure action then could be taken on that item, because we would not have a quorum at the time the vote occurred. Yes, we would have a quorum at the time the meeting began, but in order for action to occur on an item, we have to have a majority of voting members vote.
We've run into.
As I understand, the bylaws created by this, this body.
That's the way I read this, yeah.
We've run into this because we've been so short on members, in terms of approving the agenda, where we've had, I think, two votes on an approval of an agenda. We've never had it where it was a 1-0 vote for the approval of the agenda. So you, I mean, to Commissioner Friend's suggested language, and to Commissioner Zubah's question, which is a good one, I don't think this body would want to have a vote in the odd occurrence, because it would be the odd occurrence where one member would be taking an official position to make a motion on something. I can't imagine we'd, that would, I can only see that if all of us had some kind of conflict or multiple absences, but I don't think that would be a desired outcome. We could kind of tighten that if we said at least two members. Or majority.
The other option, Mr. Chairman, is, because I don't know, I clearly don't know the answer to the question. I'd be happy to allow staff to research a little bit and.
Yeah, we could talk to legal counsel.
And then, and figure out what the, what the correct wording should be, and then we could just deal with it then.
It also seems to me that that, if there is only one person sitting up here, then there can't be a second to a motion.
That's true.
Yeah, the situation where you'd have one member vote and rule the day would be to have four abstentions.
After the.
Because you'd still have, you'd still have the voting, the number of voting members still present. They just wouldn't vote, because an abstention is, is not voting. But you, you have the right to vote. You understand the distinction? It's, it's different than four people walking out of the room, where we can't pull them because they can't, you can't take a vote from someone that isn't here. Right. That, I think, is the distinction. I was referring to the case where all five of us are here, and four people get sick and then get up and leave.
It would only be after a second. It would have to have been already a seconded item, to have it open on the floor. Otherwise, you're right, it would never be able to get, it would never make it to the floor with, for lack of a second anyways.
But if four of you had laryngitis and couldn't, and couldn't say yea or nay, or no or yes, then.
We might be overthinking this.
It's certainly not my point to complicate this in the level of silliness, so I think having, and I'm not averse to that necessarily, but on this particular item, I'd rather not. So maybe, yeah, just have staff look it up for us.
Any other thoughts? I didn't really see anything in the rules and procedures that I was looking to change. I'm not sure any other members. So if we have staff look at that one particular item, that we won't be taking any, not that we would be taking any action on this anyways, besides the recommended.
Okay.
Wording. So let's, if everyone's okay, we'll go ahead and hold this matter over then. If we're going to have them.
It's been held over for a year, let's go ahead.
We're probably never going to be able to take action until we have all five members present again.
Either do that, or we go ahead and just take the, the recommended changes staff has suggested.
Yeah, I would have to move forward with that. Those two minor ones, a typo and then adding videos, can we go ahead and take action on that change?
And if staff discovers. If staff then subsequently discovers that, oh yeah, you, you could word it, clear that up, then they can just come back specific for that. In the meantime, we've got the other corrections done.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm totally happy with that. Is it a motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt the, that, those changes.
And we have a second, further discussion? Let's, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Should do a roll call.
For, for the record, who made the second?
For the record? Okay, we'll go ahead and do roll call.
Okay. I'll start from left to right. Member Friend.
Aye.
Member Jubah.
Yes.
Chair Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Chair List.
Aye.
Member Keeney.
Aye.
And for the, for the record, who made the second? Who seconded that?
That was Member, Member Friend. That matter passes 5-0.
If it's helpful, I can bring back at the next meeting, a, for a consent calendar, the changes as recommended by staff, so you'll have a clean copy for you guys all to look at. And then hopefully we'll have a response to, from legal counsel, where if that were to occur, then we could actually put it on as a separate item, a new business item, for the component raised by Member Friend.
Yep, that sounds good. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, moving on to item six, item 6.1, any matters from commissioners? Member Keen?
Go ahead.
Member List?
I have been asked by some of my neighbors to bring up the topic of parking around the Department of Motor Vehicles. On some days, it's almost impossible to get through that area because of lack of parking from on-site. That building was built somewhere in around 1970, and we've seen a tremendous growth in this city and in this county. And I would like the, I would, I would like to have the city take a look at what can be done to improve the traffic flow. At some points, it's almost impossible to get, get a vehicle through there, and we have some older neighbors up that street, Sleepy Hollow Court, that if a fire truck was to get through there on some mornings, or try to get through there some mornings, it would not be able to get through. And so that really creates a, a problem with parking on both sides of the street. So just passing that on from neighbors. And myself.
Thank you, Commissioner List. We'll take a look at that.
Commissioner Keen?
I wanted to discuss with staff, actually, I was speaking with Mr. Painter before the meeting, but I wanted to request that staff take some time in a subsequent meeting to brief us on the Clay Street Bridge replacement, and actually, the Hampton Creek Bridge replacement, Clay Street realignment project that's proposed. And also, I wanted to have staff maybe advise us, or tell us if we are expected to have any input, or if we can be of service to the city as you move forward. The draft EIR has, has been out for review and comment, and that period closes quickly, but I mostly am concerned if there's any thing that the Planning Commission can do to assist the city with the design, to kind of help bring the community together around this project, should the city council decide to move forward with a project down there. And there'll be, I'm sure there will be different options that can be discussed, and anyway, I just wanted to ask staff what, what role the Planning Commission could play, and, you know, what, what we might be expected to do in regards to that proposed project.
Staff intends on briefing the commission on item 6.2 matters from staff, and I'll briefly give an update on that project.
Member Friend?
I just wanted to welcome Commissioner Jubah, and thank my fellow commissioners for the appointment.
Great. I'll just, just quickly, it's been great serving in this role for the last, little bit over a year now, since we've had some layover, but I will thankfully pass the torch to my fellow commissioners here, so look forward to that. Thank you. Item 6.2, matters from staff.
As Pierre prepares his, his remarks tonight, I will, I will let you know that we do, will, will not be having a planning commission meeting, the first meeting in May. The second meeting in May is a possibility at this time, but I can confirm tonight that we have no projects that are in the pipeline that would be heard at that first meeting. So I don't have the date of that. Thank you.
It'll be May Day. Go have a mybok.
I'd like to update the commission on three projects. The first one is the proposed Hampton Inn and Suites. It is proposed to be developed in the Smith Flat area there at Jake Way and Point View Drive. We have been in recent contact with the project proponents, and the project has changed. Instead of a Hampton Inn and Suites, it's going to be a Holiday Inn Express. And there's a lot of reasons for that change. A lot of it was the cost overruns, when the applicant was looking at changing the Hampton Inn and Suites from being a more conventional type of construction to modular construction. They were very interested in, in a hotel that went up on East Bidwell that used these modular units that are constructed out of Boise, Idaho, and they saw that as a way of really cutting down on the costs. So what happened is, prior to actually placing their order, the price of those module units went up substantially, which then cut into the real benefit of going with a modular construction type. So then they were looking at other options. One was, can they utilize the, the foundation that was originally built for the Holiday Inn Express? And so they feel that the concrete is still valid and stable, and could be used to support a new hotel. They were working with the Hampton Inn and Suites and the Hampton Inn. There was such a change in the architecture and design of the hotel that they decided it was best to go back to see if they can renegotiate. it was best to go back to see if they can renegotiate with the Holiday Inn Express, and they were very happy to have their, their brand in, present in Placerville. So it looks like they're going to be able to save probably upwards of $2.5 to $3 million by using the original foundation. So where are we in terms of the entitlements? As you recall, we did come to the Commission in the past, and we reentitled the hotel project as a Hampton Inn and Suites. So that means that they're going to come back to us with a revision to the Hampton Inn, they actually switch back to the Holiday Inn Express. So that, the Holiday Inn Express site plan review, that'll include your review of the site, of the site plan, and the building elevations will come back to you. They, the project proponents plan on utilizing the same plans that were originally approved. So we're just trying to get all those together, and the applicant's trying to get everything together, but what you will see will be the same elevations that were originally approved, which in staff's opinion, I think, is quite a substantial improvement in terms of maybe some of the, the comments we received on the Hampton Inn Express as being more of a generic, more of an urban type of hotel design, as opposed to the Holiday Inn Express, which has a lot of elements that are more maybe foothill oriented, stone, timber, and the like, so I think it'll hopefully satisfy a lot of the folks out there that really were in favor of the, the more original hotel design instead of the Hampton Inn Suites that came through. So be looking forward to seeing that project come before you.
Does the, as far as you know, does the amount of beds or rooms change in the configuration, in the old-new configuration?
I believe it's about the same. If memory serves, I think the Holiday Inn Express was approved for about 110 rooms with the ability to go as high as 115 rooms. And I believe the Hampton Inn and Suites was about 100, I think it was about 112 rooms. So it's about the same size in terms of capacity, but I think the look is quite a bit different. And the lobby, too, is very, very nice. I think the original proponent that was sort of working on the design really liked the Iwani Hotel and the large stonework and the fireplace and all that, so I think those are components of the lobby, so it's a little bit more of a destination type of hotel than maybe the Hampton Inn and Suites were.
So some of this is encouraging to hear. I'm a huge proponent for additional lodging space in, in and around Placerville. I'm a little bit confused, though, as to whether or not they're still going to use the modular approach that they were, that was originally planned, or that became cost prohibitive, so they're not.
They will not be using the modular type construction.
So one of, one of the things I didn't care for with regards to the modular piece was it did not involve the use of, of local labor and artisans. And I don't know what role the, the Commission has, and I, and I don't like to meddle in, in, in other businesses, but at the same time, I'd like businesses to demonstrate that they're happy to be here, and, and how can we put a local workforce to work? So what, what role or options does this body have with that? How can we, you know, sway them or encourage, encourage them to, to utilize local labor and, and professionals, et cetera?
The Planning Commission would really have no, no say in those matters. That would be something where it would be a policy direction that maybe would come from the council, but let me assure you that a very local builder that we all know, they built the Boys and Girls Club, they will be, they are bidding, and hopefully they'll be successful in being the contractor chosen for the hotel.
So there, there's a bidding process going on then, right now?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's great. I mean, because there was no bid process with the modular component, that was already taken care of, so that's, that's at least good to hear. Let's hope somebody local gets it.
Let's see, the next project I'd like to update you on then is Estonia. That is the 39-unit subdivision that is located just south of the airport, down slope from the airport. It's accessed by Texerna off of Broadway, on Upper Broadway. Anyways, we've been working with, with the developer that actually purchased that property, and they've submitted improvement plans, and they're currently under review with the Engineering Division, so we're very happy to see that. The city has experienced quite of, quite a bit of development in terms of single-family unit development. We've probably seen more single-family homes built over the last couple of years than we have over the last 10 years or more. So I think if Estonia can, can move forward, I think we'll continue with that trend. We're also hopeful that there's developers out there interested in purchasing the cotton wood units four and six, which is another 39 single-family units or lots that could be developed in there as well. So we're still hoping that this momentum, since the Great Depression ended, continues. And then the last project I'd like to update you on is the Clay Street Bridge Replacement and the Clay Street Cedar Ravine Alignment Draft Environmental Impact Report. That draft EIR was circulated for 45 days, public review and agency review. That comment period is going to end tomorrow at 5:00 PM. So I encourage everyone that is listening, I encourage each of the individual members of the Planning Commission, if you are interested in, in that project, you can certainly review that environmental document. There's a lot of different sections in the document, everything from hydrology, the biology, the noise, the air quality. If there's a particular area of interest that you have or that you have expertise in, please by all means focus on that area and make your comments available to us. Essentially, what happens after the end of the comment period, staff will assemble all of those comments, we will then circulate those comments internally between us, and they'll also be made available to the public. If any member of the public wants to see or have copies of those, they can be made available to anybody that requests them. But they'll be made available to the consultant that the city is contracted with that prepared the EIR, and we will respond to all of those comments. And so you're probably looking about, I would say, a minimum of nine weeks between tomorrow and when the final EIR will be prepared. And the final EIR will have all of the comments that were received on that draft EIR, and then the response, that'll basically constitute the city's response to all those comments received. Probably the date, I would estimate, we've probably received about, maybe about between 10 and 15 comments. So, and again, I urge anybody that, and just in case anybody's listening or paying, paying attention, it's very important to comment on the draft EIR as opposed to the merits of the project. And the reason why I say that is because a time will come, once the EIR is certified, that, that concerned citizens will have the ability to actually comment on the merits. If you comment on the merits as, as a part of the EIR process, basically, our comment or response of that comment is going to be comment noted, because it's not looking at challenging or taking issue or trying to correct something in the environmental impact report. And that's why it's a draft, because the, the final then will reflect any errors that were brought to our attention, any changes that need to be made, any additional information that we can include, plus all the comments and the responses will be contained in that document. So we're moving forward slowly but surely to answer Commissioner Keen's comments. Really, there is, there is nothing, there's no process, at least currently, that involves a Planning Commission, so the project doesn't come before you, mainly because it's a public works, you know, road and bridge project. But definitely, I encourage you individually, if you're interested, you're more than encouraged to comment on that environmental document. So with that, if you have any other questions on the process, as opposed to the project, we'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you for that. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I jumped in there.
Member Friend?
So the project doesn't come to the Commission, not even for bridge treatments or aesthetics or any, any of the design components?
That is correct, that is correct.
Interesting. Because the Highway 50 project did, we were seriously engaged with the Highway 50 project. So why would this be treated differently then?
It's being treated similar to the way the Main Street project was done, and it had all the different treatments, aesthetic treatments, the ball bouts, and, and a lot of aesthetics considerations were there.
But the Planning Commission had a subcommittee, which I was a member, at least with Commissioner Patton at the time, so the Planning Commission had some pretty serious direct involvement that way, in that pathway. So I'm not being critical, I'm just curious, because I would, I would kind of expect that something of this magnitude would have the two levels of, of review and public input, Planning Commission and then, and then the council. So, okay, thank you.
Well, staff will certainly bring those sentiments forward and, and see, because I, I do know that a lot of the design work, the detailed work, has not been accomplished yet, and that will involve the general public. We'll have workshops that involve the general public and, and meetings and hearings on all the design appearances on, as to what that bridge is going to look like. So those decisions have not been made. And so we can certainly ask and bring forward to the council, and I'll bring it up to the city manager, that the Commission is, would like to have a greater role than just individually commenting on the project.
Member Keen?
Yeah, that comes back to my concern, because we are just looking at the environmental impact report, which is, that's separate from the actual design, but I, I agree with you, Commissioner Friend, that I, I want to be involved in this, and I just kind of expected that the Planning Commission would play a role to assist the city. And you mentioned possible workshops, I know that there's a lot of design, we're not even close to having the design, but I, if it's appropriate for us to work on behalf of the city, as the Commission to take comment or work with the public before that goes to the City Council, I, I would like to become involved if you feel that it's appropriate, even, I guess, up to the City Council if they want us to get involved at that level.
Well, staff will be glad to, to extend that, that request, but, but again, it's a city public works project, and typically those, those have not come to the, come to the Planning Commission, such as the Main Street, such as the, the Blurs Lane Bridge, such as the, you know, the Placerville Drive Bridge, that's not planned to come before the Commission, Broadway, Upper Broadway Bike Path and pedestrian project didn't. So typically, those don't come to the Commission. So I think this project has a lot of controversy surrounding it, so it's not necessarily controversy that would bring it to, to the Commission, but I'll certainly, again, I'll bring those sentiments forward.
We could certainly become involved as just citizens, not planning commissioners, in the workshops and surest that you have on design when we get to that point later on.
Absolutely, and like I, like I stated before, if those of you are very much interested in the project, then certainly by all means individually do become involved in the, in the project, in the process.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, kind of, I think, echoing a couple of my colleagues. I wasn't involved in the Highway 50, but certainly there does seem to be a nexus from past projects for something of this magnitude to have, what I would say, a greater role of transparency as this process moves forward. We all know this is going to be a controversial project, and I can't help but think that a Planning Commission review would just enhance that transparency as it moves forward and give the public at least two hearings for this, as this process moves forward. Certainly not one to just invite added work to ourselves, but I do think this, this potentially could be a project that certainly this Commission could provide added insight as well as public input as it moves through the process. So I know it's not, at this point, been added to our, our venue, but certainly, as my other two commissioners have said, I'd like to pass my personal sentiments on that. I do think it would be in the best interest for it to, to come to this Commission as well. Commissioner Friend?
Mr. Chairman, you just expressed, actually, what my sentiments were, and I was kind of struggling with a, an eloquent way to, to put that, and you did just a fantastic job, and I do think that if, aside from, from additional transparency and additional opportunity for the public, we could possibly take some of the pressure off, if you will, from the, the City Council by starting, starting here. So very well said, and thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Pierre, any other, was that the last item?
Yes, that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commis, thank you, Mr. Rivas. Okay, any other items? That's it. So we will move to a adjourned this meeting. Thank you.